Just a reminder, I'm out next week. I'm in Nice in Chicago. And then I'd like, Jackie, if we could add on the 21st, the DOT program and budget for review and approval. Usually had to have it done before April 15th, but I think they push it now that we get to have it signed by the 30, by the end of the month and have it turned down. So, question for the board. I know we were on, we had talked about possible hires, but also our part timers. Mike uses a part-time driver for him to spray. And then we usually get mowers, guys to come mowing. Are you guys still okay with that type of a setup? So just kind of budgeted in there.
I guess one was, you don't think the regular guys can handle all that?
I think we're going to be awfully busy, especially if we've got retirements coming up. We're going to be thin, so I'd like to keep. You know, it helps Mike out tremendously. And then if we, even if we have one guy mowing, we can still throw some other guys into. But trying to keep, you know, we're pretty thin. And I'd like to maybe kind of help supplement.
Well, I'm sure Mike's got to have somebody to help him. And that spray truck, it's all set up with the controls and stuff. And like I said before, you just got to go to county lines and you can see the difference. So he's doing a good job.
You're okay with that? We'll just kind of keep doing what we've been doing.
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, just remember that they need to.
Yep, the paperwork and stuff needs to go through.
Through here before.
Yep, I think Mike usually kind of comes up and takes care of all that.
Work needs to get done.
Well, and that's just it. We're, you know. We depend on those seasonal people quite a bit. Anyway, that's all I really got for you. We're going to try to continue blading everything. Kind of get the road shaped up.
Supposed to be some rain maybe coming Wednesday again.
Yeah, so a blade and a rain, it'll turn sloppy.
No, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice and dry and hard out there right now.
It's amazing though, we've had rock down for quite a, you know, since last summer and some of it still isn't tied down. It's just amazing how.
It was so hard and dry last fall, never got a chance. Let's see, we got two frost blows coming out.
Yeah, we're outriding around this morning a little bit. And not a lot. I didn't see much on the routes I were on, I was on, but they're starting to show their face.
Here and there.
Hopefully it doesn't get bad, but we'll see.
Okay, that's good. Anything else, guys? Well, drainage?
Yes. When do I start red?
Uh, well, you got DD 14 payment request above.
Yes. He didn't get it to me right away, so I was just printing it off, so. We have them resigning. Payment number two is 220,638,32.
For the budget ducks out there.
Motion to approve that payment request.
The second thing. Moving to the second. Any further discussion? None, almost fair to say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion, carry. So this one here, just.
Yeah, I just made a copy of the top page three times, so.
Got the tab in the wrong place. It's way down there and the signature's up there. Okay. Uh, we have some bigger claims first, or this?
No, no claims.
No claims, okay. So DD 3, that ditch eight clean out, so.
That's the one BMW said we need to clean out.
Yeah, we, a few years ago, Ruggnus came in there because there's Beaver dams, cleaned it out. It's another one that goes right through the DNR ground. Actually, this ditch goes all the way through Rice Lake.
I see that on the map.
So I know Ruggnus cleaned it. DNR raised a little stank when it rises in there, but it's our drainage ditch, even though it's sitting national channels through their ground. So I mean, I don't know if we need it. That's the one that.
Maybe just a courtesy call to Rob Patterson and say we're going to do it?
You got his number?
Call Patterson?
Yeah, just let him know.
Just let him know that we need to stay ahead of it. We're going to get it cleaned and then we'll.
It's all grown up again. And I would assume even on stick ground like that, we have the ability to do so many for both ways, I would hope.
There should be an easement right away.
Pretty sure we reclassified this one too.
Yeah, because did Ruggnus clean the whole thing? Because then I looked back at the invoice from 12/21. It just said he had to remove some trees and clean up part of the ditch where the dam had blocked.
Yeah, he went all the way, he went all the way to the block, the highway there, A38 or whatever it is. At that time, he went all the way, dug it out, pulled trees out of there and stuff like that. It's not a real long stretch, but, so I'm guessing what he's saying is that the banks are all grown up, look like willows and things like that. They're too big to spray, so it made any to be molded and controlled, I would suppose. So, but, yeah.
You said that it was 4,000 foot? That's the total of it with the part that goes even in the outlet?
I measured from beginning to end.
From the beginning of the outlet to the highway there?
I got a little map there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
And there's DNR plus three landowners involved?
Well, there's more than that. I mean.
I'm just talking.
Didn't actually outlet it.
On their property.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Because full disclosure, I outlet into this ditch. I got tile that goes into this, so. Yeah, so it's going in that DNR ground, but it's our channel, so.
There should be easements right away. So I would just, I'd just like to say courtesy call to Rob.
Yep.
We're getting prices to get it cleaned out.
Yep.
If he has any questions or concerns, he can reach out to us.
Okay, take a motion then to do the repairs and improvements on DD 3. So get a couple bids from somebody and.
Motion move forward, that work order.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving to the second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion, carry. There you go. Okay.
Val, you and Mike got together on that other ditch?
Yes. Yeah, so we're good on that.
Okay. That one run in parallel, but.
Right there.
He refreshed me and I'm like, yes, it was a work order. We did put in and we had to clean that, so.
Perfect.
Too many ditches.
On the bids, one of them showed it and one of them didn't.
Yeah.
But Mike's cleared it.
And I did, I did find the bill from the engineer's office that showed that. So I just didn't have it in my spraying folder.
Now you do.
Now I do. I was, that should be it.
Okay. Claims, what do we got?
Don't we have the two bids cleaning out the ditches?
For DD 3?
Oh, yeah.
From BMW and from Frank Salvatore?
Is that on for this week?
That's next week.
It's next week?
Next week.
That showed up late Friday. We told her.
Pretty sure it's next week.
Yeah.
I'm just checking, so we don't scare you.
Yep. Trying to go down and check it off every day, so. Claims, is there any claims?
No.
Uh, so we've got reports. Taking motion to approve the reports. We've got the sheriffs, auditors.
No. Oh, clerk of court.
Clerk of court, excuse me.
Two sheriff, clerk of court, attorney of court.
Okay, I'm motion to approve the reports.
I'll second that.
Moving to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion, carry. So Melissa, you want to?
Yeah.
Payroll eligibility, liquor license.
No.
Non-disclosure agreement between Iowa State Association of Counties, Iowa County Technological Services and Work County. Is there a chance to look at that? So taking motion to approve.
Well, my favorite, but motion to approve it.
This every year, I think, yeah.
No, no, this is, we're working, we're looking at software.
Oh, that's right, this is the update. Possibly state, get it statewide, so it's going better. I hope so. Save a whole bunch of money then when you guys get things done easier, right?
Hopefully.
Sure.
Technology is supposed to make things better. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, moving to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion, carry. Well, I hope they find something that does work. Uh, anything on the building grounds, maintenance, conservation facility, any updates?
They are, I say, two weeks, AJ. That's what they said, that we are pre-construction for our, our facility, just the shop area. On Friday.
Oh, Friday.
We had it last Friday, so.
That's right, it is.
They gave us the schedule and things that could be done. I think the bulk of the work, they said, is projected to be done by the 21st of July, so 10 days before our actual, you know, their, what was the end date in the bidding.
Yeah.
Or the punch list was September 20, something or something like that.
That far, which with the scope of that, I wouldn't expect a huge punch list because there's.
Right.
It's not like you're building a church or school where you go through just every little thing, you know. Yeah. So I would assume by mid-July, it's pretty close to being.
Completed.
Program completed. Completed, so those guys can start moving in shortly after.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Uh, is Melissa on there? Is she gone? I think she's gone.
What time is it?
Something, nothing to give the service. So at 9 o'clock, we got Elizabeth. Uh, Department of Discussion. All right. Any comments from supervisors?
Um, I did have someone reach out about issuing my water, I thought I said just forwarded her out to Agent Peter Berg. Nothing. The construction meeting was all that, nothing major.
Okay. Anything for next week's agendas? It's not on here. Excuse me. Okay, so I'm going to recess the meeting until 9 o'clock. Elizabeth, get your.
The audit is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. And then we offer our opinion based on the results of our audit test work. So we'll go ahead and start with the auditors' report then on page 2. And again, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2024, which is what you want to hear. It's a clean opinion. We believe the financial statements are fairly presented. There were material misstatements that we found during the course of our audit test work. We proposed adjusting journal entries and all of that was, the adjusting journal entries were made so that those transactions were properly included in the financial statements. So, you know, this just goes ahead and talks about that. Talks about the basis for our opinion, the responsibilities of management for the financial statements. On page 3, we talk about the auditor's responsibilities for the audit. Our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because again, we don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. So we're just providing reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of a misstatement there. So, um, on page 6, we start the management's discussion and analysis. And then the following pages, just go ahead and talk about the financial highlights for 2024. Also talks about using this annual report. And again, as in years past, we have three sets of financial statements. The county budget's on the cash basis, so we have a budget to actual cash comparison. You also are required to present a modified accrual basis of accounting and financial statement, which mirrors the GAAP report that submitted to Department of Management. And then you're also required to present a full accrual financial statement, which includes all the capital assets and long-term liabilities. So this just goes ahead and explains all of that. Again, gives some highlights of what was going on during the year. There's a chance for the county to talk about the budget during fiscal '24, the amendments that you are making and why you were making them. Talks about your capital assets, talks about your debt, talks about the next year's budgets and rates. So a chance to talk about fiscal '25's budget and rates. The actual financial statements then start on page 14. And on page 14 and 15, we have Exhibit A. On page, um, on page 16 and 17, then we have the Statement of Activities. So these are your full accrual financial statements, which are going to most likely look the most like what you would see in the private sector. So our Statement of Net Position is what you would see for a balance sheet. Statement of Activities is your income statement. So again, this shows all of your capital assets. It shows your long-term liabilities. So this is the true financial position for the county. On page 16 and 17, the majority of that is due to your governmental activities, your business-type activities did have a deficit. Any questions about any of that? So. This does not have your capital assets or your long-term liabilities included on it. It also shows your unearned revenues, which is the unspent portion of your American Rescue Plan Act, and that's located in the general fund. And there was about $324,000 that had not been spent and will recognize it as revenue as it is spent as per the requirements of the grant. And again, with the presentation, we present general rural services, secondary roads, the Highway 105 trust, the wind farm TIF and the capital projects funds as major own in this financial statement. And then we have the column titled non-major. That is the remainder of the governmental funds that are smaller with the receipts and disbursements. They're aggregated and presented together in the front of the book. They're presented in schedules 1 and schedules 2 in the back of the book so that those individual funds have their chance to shine. So Exhibit D and Exhibit F then show the transition from modified accrual to full accrual financial statement. So if you step through those two schedules, you can see exactly what's on one that's not on the other. So that goes ahead and steps you through the conversion process. So that gets us to Exhibit G, H, and I. And these are your proprietary fund financial statements. We have the wastewater and water funds presented as enterprise funds. We have your health insurance presented as an internal service fund. I do want to talk about Exhibit H, which is the Statement of Net Position or Statement of Changes in Net Position. And the enterprise funds continue to show a net loss. And I know we've talked about this pretty much every year for the last eight years about redoing the ordinances for the rates for water and wastewater. So I went back and I pulled the financial statements for the last four years. And for fiscal '21 through fiscal '24, you guys have had a net operating loss of $449,968. And that's a really big number. Those ordinances are intended to be updated annually. And I believe that was the agreement when this was first put in place, that those were to be updated annually, just like what the cities do for their rates. You know, that's part of the city business. Every year, they revisit those water and sewer rates. And also it helps with your, with your customers, so it's not such a big shock when you have an increase because of course, costs have gone up significantly. So, you know, for this year, we have almost $150,000 loss for those funds. So like I said, out of curiosity, I just pulled the last four years of history and aggregate of that, $449,968 is what's been lost on those funds. So.
Our ordinance is done.
So for '25, I'm not going to have a.
You will not say that again, because we have a really big.
I hope not.
Okay.
It's been more than we were generating.
It could still be '25, but '26 you definitely won't say it.
Okay, so it's going to be implemented for fiscal '26?
It's, it's starting, yeah.
Okay.
But that's only.
Or no.
That's only a couple of months of this year.
Our publication.
Yep.
Okay.
May 1st.
Well, like I said, I know that's something we've talked about pretty much the tenure that I've been here, so.
It's better glosses.
It's just a significant dollar amount. And, you know, you're depleting down the funds and I don't want you to be in a position where you don't have the cash to pay your bills. So, okay. So then Exhibit J and Exhibit K are your fiduciary or custodial funds. So this is your assessor, your emergency management, 911, your cities, your townships, your schools, where you're collecting tax and either paying their bills or remitting those dollars to them. So Exhibit J shows your Statement of Net Position. Exhibit K shows the Statement of Changes. And again, with these, this is aggregated. The detail for these funds is in the back of our audit report in Schedules 3 and 4, so you can see the individual activity of the individual funds. On page 32, then, we start the notes to the financial statements. And I'm going to skip over all of these unless somebody has a specific question about one. Again, it's summary significant accounting policies. It's a lot of accounting and auditing vocabulary. There's amortization schedules for your debt. There's required information about the pension plan that's provided by the actuary. Required information about your other post-employment benefits, again, required and provided by the actuary. There's information about your insurance and your health insurance. So I do want to stop then on page 60. And this is the budgetary comparison schedule of receipts and disbursements. So this is our cash basis where we go ahead and we show all of the cash receipts and disbursements for your governmental funds during the year. That's an actual column. The less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage. So we pull all of that out because drainage is not required to be budgeted for. So then that gets us to the net. Then we present the original budget and we present the final amended budget. And then we look at any variances. Some of those variances are significant, but through the course of the audit process, you know, we're having discussions with the elected officials and department heads, and there were reasonable explanations for that. Projects never progressed the way you think they're going to. Mother nature interferes with your schedule. Grant dollars you might be anticipating from the state don't always come in when you think they're going to. So again, even though some of those variances appear to be significant, they were explained, so there weren't any red flags raised on our end. So then the following pages are just some additional required supplementary information about the budget. There's some required supplementary information about IFRS. There's a couple of 10-year schedules that show the trends for comparative analysis. Again, some more actuary information. OPEB, we've got a seven-year schedule that will be growing to a 10-year schedule of, of the changes in the liability for the last seven years. On page 71 and 72, we start the supplementary information. And again, these are the schedules that present the smaller, non-major governmental funds. So we have the balance sheet and the Statement of Changes for those. And then Schedules 3 and 4, same thing for the custodial funds. And then Schedule 5 on page 79 gives us 10 years of history for the revenues by source and expenditures by function for all the governmental funds. And that gets us to page 81, which is Independent Auditors' Report on Internal Control of the Financial Reporting and on Compliance. And in addition to applying on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we do some internal control work and we also do some Code of Iowa compliance test work. The State Auditor's Office does provide us with the compliance guide, things that they want us to check every year. There's some things that we test every couple of years, some things every three years, every five years, you know, on a rotating basis. And then sometimes they, they throw in something extra for fun. So again, based on tests and samples, we don't test every single transaction that might have had an impact on the findings. And then we go ahead and include the findings based on the results of our audit test work. So the schedules finding then start on page 83. The first one is segregation of duties, which is an old friend. It's in every single audit report that we issue. Just because you don't have enough people on staff to entirely segregate the custody and the record keeping of the cash. So it's possible some, one person would handle a transaction from inception to completion. So again, we encourage cross-training, you know, making sure that, you know, somebody else in the office can do those if, you know, somebody has to be gone. We encourage the supervisors to be very involved with the claims process. You know, that next set of eyes, very, very important. You know, just to make sure that, you know, you're paying the appropriate bills. And, you know, bank reps, again, having a set of eyes to review that, doing what you can to, to make sure that you're segregated as much as possible with the staff that you have. The second finding we have is in regards to preparation of full disclosure financial statements. Again, this one's an old friend and it's in 98% of the audit reports that we issue. You don't have a CPA or financial director on staff that prepares the GAAP report and also the full accrual financial statements in this lovely book full of disclosures. So because we assist with that process, I'm required to put a finding in our year to add in the audit report. For the financial reporting finding, this year, there were material amounts of accounts receivable, accrued interest and deferred inflows of resources that hadn't been properly recorded in the county's financial statements. A lot of this is due to the opioid settlement with the accounts receivable and the deferred inflows. There were several settlements that were complete during fiscal '24, including Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, and, you know, several of those. The State Auditor's Office generally provides that information to the county so that they have a spreadsheet, know what to expect, know where it's coming from. And they were a little bit late in providing that information. So we did compile a spreadsheet, which Jackie now has, so that she can go ahead and track those payments as they come in, because you're going to be getting them for the next 17 years. So that way you can go ahead and be tracking those dollars as they come. And then we'll have that in place for, you know, years to come. Okay, we start the statutory findings on page 85. With the budget this year, the disbursements during the year didn't exceed the amounts budgeted by service area. However, we had two departments where they exceeded the amounts appropriated. And that's the IT department and the organization department. So just making sure you're keeping an eye on those and letting Jackie know when you need to have a budget amendment. You know, the department heads are the ones that need to be initiating that conversation. Jackie's office provides those reports every month that gives them the budget to actual information. So the departments know what they're going to have for expenditures. They know what they've got coming up. So if they have a big expenditure need to make an adjustment, they need to be letting her know so that the board can go ahead and appropriate as necessary. The second one we have is in regards to questionable expenditures. You know, Mr. Sand, our state auditor, is very, very active in talking about public purpose and questionable expenditures are kind of his pet project. So we did identify expenditures this year that don't have public purpose or don't appear to have public purpose. So we have purchase power. There were late fees in regards to the treasurer's office. And then also there was a pet lodging fee that was reimbursed to Jeff Greve. So those two are the ones that may not need to test a public purpose. So again, public purpose, every disbursement that comes through here should have appropriate public benefit. The public's got to get a benefit out of it. Doesn't matter if you had it budgeted or not, there's got to be a public benefit. And again, that's per the guidance from our State Auditor's Office.
You probably can't answer that question, then. I mean, our rights to overrule this claim when he claims he has it in his budget. I mean, you know.
You can, because, I mean, your question is, what's the public purpose? Because again, this quotes, and, and you know, if you read through this, the Iowa Constitution and several attorney generals' opinions have talked about public purpose and there has to be a defined public benefit. So that is your question back, if it is, you know, yeah, you can, you can budget for all the expenditures you want, but that doesn't necessarily mean that public's going to get a benefit out of it. And when you're talking tax dollars and especially in House File 718 world, And when you're talking tax dollars and especially in House File seven eighteen world, where every dollar counts, um, you know, you gotta have public benefit for every expenditure that you're making. So you're well within your rights to, to question, what's the public benefit of this expense?
And that's why we changed the process.
Right.
The question was just something like.
I know, not asking for your clarification, but this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Noted.
Okay. Um, on page eighty six, uh, we talk about business transactions. The Code of Iowa identifies six thousand dollars as the threshold for potential conflict of interest with a related party. Uh, we do have one, um, vendor where we're well over that, but, um, the county employee doesn't participate in the acquisition of those services. So that makes it inappropriate. I mean, we're a small town. You want to be able to support your local businesses and everybody's related to everybody. So, um, as long as you're going through the proper channels to acquire those services, this just becomes a transparency disclosure and there's no finding associated with it. And we turn to page eighty seven, uh, we have a comment about the deposit and investment policy. The investment policy doesn't comply with chapters twelve B and twelve C of the Code of Iowa. And also the policy that's currently in place does not identify stamped drainage warrants as an approved investment. This is a repeat comment from last year. So, um, you just need to get the verbiage from another county.
Those are from last week, that's before.
Okay. Yep. So as long as you've got the, the right verbiage and that you include those stamped drainage warrants, that one will go away then for next year as well. Financial position, uh, the Facility Improvement Capital Project Fund had a deficit balance at June thirtieth. This is, uh, due to that interfund loan, because that creates a due to, due from other funds type of situation. And so because you have that due to other funds, that's what triggers this deficit balance. So, um, you know, I know you're anticipating issuing some debt for this and paying that loan back. And so then this will go away also, once that process is complete. Page eighty eight, we have an interest received comment. Um, interest earned on nine one one surcharge, uh, REIT funds, recorders, records management, recorders, electronic transaction and health insurance. The code specifically requires that any interest earned on those funds be recorded to the appropriate fund. So they go back to that fund. Any other interest that is recorded in the general fund. And I think that was a misunderstanding, um, because several years, um, the question had been asked if they have to keep separate checking accounts for all of those different funds, which you don't. Um, you know, again, I have some county treasurers that have two checking accounts. I have some that have fifty. It's however, it's going to work for them to correctly allocate those costs and that interest. You can go ahead and put all those funds together in one pot. You know, I've got one treasurer that has two checking accounts and does it very efficiently. But then you have to prorate the interest that is earned on that checking account to the different funds. And I think that was where the disconnect was, because that's what happened. Those funds were all accumulated because you can get a better interest rate if you have a higher balance. You just have to remember that when that monthly statement comes, that interest has to be divided, split and recorded in the appropriate places. So, and I think that's probably already taken care of. Yeah, yeah. The next one is in regards to the treasurer's semi annual report. Um, we've had problems with Tyler counties not having the treasurer's side talk to the auditor's side and stuff doesn't match. So I don't know if we need to add a step to the ending, end of the year, end of the month balancing process. Uh, I don't know if it's a Tyler glitch that they need to go in and fix something. All I know is that the report that was published and provided to us for audit work did not agree with the county's Iowa county ledger. And the county's Iowa county ledger is the general ledger of the county. You know, that shows disbursements as they are approved and expended. So that is what it needs to tie back to. Um, and also the June report didn't get published. That was an oversight, um, so that going forward will be okay. I think Amy said that was the first time that's ever happened. Yeah. It just didn't get published, so, but the code does require that. So making sure that that December and that June report get published. Um, the next one, we had a transfer, uh, from the county conservation fund to the general basic fund that was not done by resolution. Uh, again, the Code of Iowa requires those transfers are approved by a resolution, so they are formal and documented. So I believe this one was done by motion instead of resolution. So it was still in the minute, still went through the approval process, but it wasn't the appropriate process. The last, um, report finding we have then is in regards to the opioid settlement fund. Uh, when all of this happened with the opioids, the uniform chart of accounts was adjusted to account for revenues coming in and expenditures going out. Also, the budget, the cash and the GAAP reports were modified, uh, for that as well. So just need to make sure you're getting the right line items set up so that when you're spending those opioid settlement funds, it's going through the right line item so that it's reported properly, because you don't want to have anything slip through the cracks with the reporting process for those. Okay, so that gets us to the end of the book, but we still have more to talk about. Worth County spent a lot of federal money this year, um, and a lot of it was the American Rescue Plan Act. You had seven hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars of expenditures, um, from the American Rescue Plan Act. The threshold for a single audit is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal dollars. But when you look at what secondary roads had, public health had, you know, your LAE reimbursement, you look at the county as a whole, you were over that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. Fortunately, the Office of Management, Management and Budget, uh, passed a special rule to deal with this American Rescue Plan Act. And it said that if an entity hit that threshold and it's due to the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan, instead of having to have a full blown, single audit with all of the reporting to the federal clearinghouse and all the extra compliance test work, you can have a procedure just to look at the American Rescue Plan Act. And because you fit all of the, you checked all the boxes, you guys qualified to go ahead and do that alternative compliance examination engagement. So we did have to go ahead and do compliance test work on your American Rescue Plan spending, making sure that, you know, you fit the requirements. There are certain things you cannot spend those dollars for, so we're testing to make sure that, you know, you did not spend your dollars for any of those, um, items. And then we had to go ahead and issue a separate report, which I'm going to hand to Jackie now. Um, you don't have this in your information, but it's an independent accountant's report on just those American Rescue Plan Act dollars. She will have to go ahead and submit that, and I think you were working on that maybe last week, to the U.S. Department of Treasury. It's part of your reporting for the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, at this point in time, you don't have to submit to the federal audit clearinghouse. Um, they kind of did a big revamp back in October of twenty twenty three, and they're not currently accepting those submissions. Um, if the point in time comes when they do start accepting them, she'll have to submit it there as well and she'll get a notice at that point in time if she needs to do anything beyond that. But right now it just has to be, um, submitted with the U.S. Treasury. We did have a finding in regard to the year procurement policy. Your procurement policy wasn't in accordance with the uniform guidance. Again, you have to have your proper verbiage and, you know, you're well versed with that. It's got to have the proper verbiage, um, the different levels of purchasing, the kinds of approval that you have to have. So, um, you know, that hadn't been adopted. It was adopted for you guys on December twenty third of twenty twenty four. So this finding is already resolved, so. But because the period under audit was as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, we've got the finding because it wasn't in place at that point in time. So I will give that to you. Um, there were other, you know, smaller issues that we had during the course of the audit with different, um, you know, departments and areas, uh, that were discussed with the department heads at that point in time. Um, I do also want to talk about concerns that have been voiced. We talked to all the elected officials, we talked to all the department heads. Um, you know, we all have family and friends in the community. All the recorders talk, all the treasurers talk, all the auditors talk. And, you know, we perform the audit for eleven different counties. So we hear a lot of different stories and a lot of different things from a lot of different people, whether it's within the course of the audit or not. Um, also concerned citizens have a tendency to call the state auditor's office with questions and concerns. Um, that did happen for you guys this year. And, uh, the state auditor's office did direct us to just go ahead and expand our test work, um, on certain areas. But I do want to share it with you because it's important that you're aware of and know it. Um, and again, these calls came in probably about, hmm, I don't know, some of them were a year ago. Some of them were six months ago. Um, but again, in discussion with other counties, discussion with all the employees, you know, elected officials, whatever. Um, but there was issue about the public purpose process for claims, making sure that claims had proper public purpose, which we, you know, had that discussion here. Um, you know, so just making sure you've got that policy in place. And whether it's Chelsea preparing the claims and coming down with them. You know, I have some counties where the, the person that can, that prepares the claims will bring them down if there's any questions or concerns to go through them. I have some places where the auditor will pass along that information. I don't care how you do it, just have those conversations so that, you know, the public purpose is addressed, you know, right away. Um, and again, so we had phone calls about that. That was a, an area of discussion for, for several people. Also, um, with payroll and people not necessarily working the time that's on their timesheet. Um, again, calls to state auditor's office from concerned citizens. And this is goes for elected officials, this goes for salaried employees, hourly employees. I'm a big fan of timesheets. I want you to document, you know, when you're here, whether you're an elected official or not. Um, again, I like it because then elected officials have some weight when they're talking raises and that type of thing, because they've got a documentation of the hours that they worked. And to me, it's no different than having a claim that you're submitting for payment through the county. Your timesheet is your claim. So, you know, I like that. Um, I know not everybody here does a timesheet. Um, and I know that there's been some question, again, from concerned citizens about, you know, Jake's got his bus route. You guys all know that. Public comes in, they don't always know that. You know, we had concerns with the recorder's office, um, you know, because Teresa isn't there. Um, again, the code dictates they only have to be there a certain number of days. It's kind of up to the supervisors to, you know, decide on office staff based on, on that. So, um, again, like I said, just a lot of phone calls. I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that people are watching, people are talking. Um, and whether it's another, you know, treasurer or recorder or auditor that you talk to at conference and talking about this and that, you know, people talk, it gets around. You guys live in a small community. Um, so just be aware, people are watching and they're making comments about it and they, they've had questions about it. You know, how come those elected officials aren't in their office all the time? We're paying them X number of dollars and they're not there. Or, you know, you see, um, you know, there's a comment about kids being in one of the offices, you know, and well, this isn't a daycare, this is a business, place of business. So again, I don't know if these concerns have been expressed to you or if they're going straight to, you know, the state auditor's office. Or like I said, I just live in Osage, so, you know, kids being in sports and whatever, you, you talk to a lot of people. You, they know what I do, they know that I audit, they know, you know, and they, they, they like to talk to me and tell me things. So I just want to make you aware that those conversations are being had. Um, people are watching, people are talking. So, um, again, I'm a huge proponent of timesheets for everybody, just so you do have that documentation.
Reverted. We did, I don't want to address it last summer, but we had a HR attorney here. Basically said at that point, there was nothing we could do.
Yeah.
Only thing we can do, budget time is just around the corner.
It is, it is.
And decisions probably need to be made. And probably will or not, I don't know.
It, it's just concerning to me from an audit standpoint. And like I said, this is why I wanted to make you aware, because that's fraud. If you're lying on your timesheet, it's fraud. It's not an error, it's not irregularity, i- you know, i- if you're lying on your timesheet, it is, it is fraud. And it needs to be addressed. And, um, you know, again, the state auditor's office has us expand our procedures on certain things. But again, if people aren't preparing timesheets and we're not here, you know, we, we don't, we're here, what, a week, two, two weeks out of the year to do the audit. So it kind of falls on, you know, the elected officials, the department heads to be monitoring and doing. And, you know, making sure that your employment policies and procedures are being followed, that people are getting paid for their time, work, that they're taking their, their time. Um, you know, all the compensated absences should be running through Teresa through payroll. You know, anytime you're taking vacation, anytime you're taking compensated absences, I know we've been working with public health, Jackie, do we have that yet? Public health. You know, they're trying to go ahead and keep track of their own compensated absences. Well, there's no reason to when Teresa shares, processes all the payroll and tracks everybody else's compensated absences, so.
Can I talk about, we are working on it with Teresa though, yeah. I'm, I'm working on getting her that.
And I know that you're in transition too.
Yeah.
But it's been something that's been talked about for two years now.
Well, right, and I just took over in July, but yep, I'm, I'm trying to get something that they can read the way we accrue it, they don't else. So we're trying to figure all that out as well.
Okay, so let's, let's shoot for, so it's not a finding next year, so let's do it before June.
Well, yep, July one was, Jack, I guess we talked about that we got that done before the next fiscal year started, so.
Okay. So you're on it, but again.
I'm on it.
So let's get it done.
Oh, appreciate it, thank you. It's like, it's an everyone is for the public too. And, uh, say, it's something we're going to have to consider.
And again, you know, I listen and it's small town. So you, you have to sort through what is rumor, what is hearsay, what is, you know, what might have a greater truth on it. But again, enough people wanted to talk about it that it just threw up a red flag for me. So I want you all to be aware of it and I just want you to act appropriately and.
I got another question for you. Um, no one did come talk to me from the audit office and I am the department head. When you said you took, spoke to everyone, she's not a department head.
But she does your financial reporting and that is where we get the information is from the one that does the financial reporting. So Chris was over to visit with her because she's the one that provides the information. She actually knows the receipts, knows the disbursements. And, um, when he asked, she said that you were not necessarily involved in that process. And.
Okay.
She's the one that does that piece of it, so.
All right.
Do you want to be added to my list?
Yes, I do, I would. Thank you very much, thanks.
Yeah.
I didn't, um, like I said, just starting this last July, I wasn't aware of this, but yes, I would love to be.
It's usually with Kim, because again, she's the one that handles all of that for you, so.
Actually, I would, because I'm more involved in it than probably the previous one was, so I definitely want to be involved in that.
I will add you to the list, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah. So what else do you have for questions, concerns? I know we hit a lot this morning and.
Just one quick thing.
Yeah.
Us, file seven eighteen's been a pain in the butt.
Yeah.
What are your feelings on this new possible legislation? Good, bad, ugly?
I don't know.
Oh, we're going to figure that out.
I think everybody is in a bad situation right now, and especially the small counties. Um, because you're going to have to cut services or cut people is what it's going to come down to. Um, and that's just, it's not good for anybody. So I think you have to make the best choices you can with the information that you have at this point. Um, and that's all you can do.
I, I have a question too on public purpose. Um, through, because through public health, I write a lot of grants and we get a lot of grants to do, um, different things.
Now, grants are, grants are a different thing. Because if it specifically says, you know, the example I'm going to give you is the VA grant.
Yes.
That they get ten thousand dollars to spend on marketing, advertisement, that type of thing.
Okay.
Normally that does not have a public purpose to buy pens and, and, and cups and mugs and all that, that, what the grant specifically says.
Okay, I have a grant, that's what I was wondering.
It's got to specifically say that it is for that purpose.
Okay, then I'm good.
And then, you know, in my perfect world, the auditor's office is going to catch that claim going through and say, um, hey, you can't do that.
Yep.
And say this, tell the supervisors, hey, you can't do that. And that's going to come back to you and you're going to say, hey, here's my paperwork.
Okay.
And then, you know, if you have a copy of that grant and you push it through with the claim.
Okay.
Absolutely do it, because then it saves us a couple of steps.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah. No, thank you.
No problem.
Next year's concerns. Here we go again.
Well, if you have any questions or concerns between now and then, call me. And like I said, um, you're on my radar, because like I said, enough people have made concerns about different items and things. So if I hear anything between now and when we come back to do summer preliminary work, you know, the GAAP report, whatever, um, I'm going to bring it to your attention right away, because like I said, there was enough conversation about the payroll, the, the, the hours worked, um, that it's definitely a concern to a lot of people. And it sounds like you guys have been hearing it as supervisors too, which that makes me feel really, you know, not, not happy that you have the problem, but please, people are talking about it.
This past week it's real kicked up.
Okay. Like I said, if you have questions, please contact me.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right there. Do you need anything for that?
Yeah. Yep, that's, yep. Use that tray all the time.
Did you, um, very frightened or anything?
Oh, yep.
Till you get this back.
Yep.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll send you that motion.
It's been moved in a second. We'll proceed discussion. Here in none, roll call vote. Lowberg.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Navy.
Aye.
Will we go into closed session? Ask everybody to please leave the room.
In the hallway.